Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council, and I'm going to call this regular meeting of the City Council for July 10th to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman is absent. Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitak.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky is absent. Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins is absent. Vice President Chugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are seven members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are seven ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. The next item is the acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting of June 18th. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are seven ayes.
That carries, and the minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are seven ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. I'll also note we've been joined by Councilmember Cashman. The next order of business is the presentation of reports from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee has 29 items that we're bringing forward. The first is a gift acceptance from versa term for two Minneapolis Police Employee Registration. Number two is a gift acceptance from the National Association of County and City Health Officials of Registration, Lodging, and Transportation. Three is a gift acceptance from the International Association of Emergency Managers of Airfare, Lodging, Ground Transportation, and Perdium. Four is a gift acceptance from Local Progress for Travel Expenses. Five is Minneapolis Foundation Grant to Support Office of Community Safety Interns. Six is a contract with Standic Consulting Services, Inc. for Architectural and Engineering Design Services. Seven is a contract with Nova Global, Inc. for Speed and Red Light Camera Enforcement System. Eight is contracts with various vendors for the 2025 through 2028 Neighborhood Safety Department Service Provider Pool. Nine is contracts with various artists for the New Nicolet Public Art Design Project Phase Two Fabrication. Ten is contracts with various community partners for senior services and senior community navigator services. Eleven is contracts with various organizations for partnership engagement fund projects. Twelve is a contract with First Person Responder LLC for medical consultant services. Thirteen is contract amendment with Burwell Roofing Company for the state parking ramps and Skyways Roof Restoration Project. Fourteen is a contract amendment with CERN Construction, Inc. for the Bancroft Pond Project. Fifteen is a contract amendment with Shehe Construction Company for the Convention Center Meeting Rooms Remodel Phase Two Project. Sixteen is contract amendment with Safety Signs LLC for rental of traffic control devices. Seventeen is contract amendment with Great Matter Systems LLC for GE Digital Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System Software License and support for the Water Treatment and Distribution Division. Eighteen is a contract amendment with Dyrad Technologies, Inc. for utility billings, interactive voice response system. Nineteen is a contract amendment with Touch Outreach for downtown Minneapolis Emergency Response Services. Twenty is a contract amendment with Formation Hilling Arts for Trauma Response Services for the Trans Equity Summit. Twenty-one is a contract amendment with Vinco, Inc. for Catch Basin and Madness Hole repairs. Twenty-two is a bid for Shingle Creek West ADA Pedestrian Ramp Improvement. Twenty-three is a legal workers' compensation claim of Joseph Leevac. Twenty-four is a legal workers' compensation claim of Grant Snyder. Twenty-five is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Gretchen Bloss. Twenty-six is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Thomas Clark. Twenty-seven is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Amy Kreckelberg. Twenty-eight is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Sean McGinty. Twenty-nine is a legal settlement Octavia Marshall v. City of Minneapolis. And with that, I will move all items for approval except items 23, 24, 25, 27, and 28.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval of the committee's report minus items number 23, 24, 25, 27, and 28. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye on all but item 11, nay on item 11.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes on the report except for number 11, which has eight ayes and one nay.
Those items carry. Next, we will take up items 23, 24, 25, 27, and 28. And I'll also recognize Councilmember Chowdhury has joined us. Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Oh, Councilmember Wonsley.
I did want to flag, since this is another match for workers' compensation claim, that my office is going to be working with both Risk Management and City Attorney's Office to get another update on these matters in the Administration, Enterprise Oversight Committee, and will inform our colleagues of when that presentation will take place.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one else left in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Nay.
Vice President Chugtai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are six ayes and three nays.
That... Those items carry, and we have completed that full report. Next, we'll have the report from our Business Housing and Zoning Committee, given by that committee's chair, Councilmember... Oh. Do we have... We don't have the chair or the vice chair. Who would we like to have do the biz report? Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne, for the biz committee. We have many items. Give me one second. Thank you. Okay. Item number one. We have hard times cafe, street license. We have River City Tavern on sale liquor license, limited Sunday sales. Number three, we have tobacco products, location restrictions, and prohibited sales ordinance. Number four, we have snelling yards, family housing, tax exemption. Number five, we have approving 180 degrees for host approval and issuance of tax-exempt revenue bronze. Number six, approving three liquor licenses. Number seven, approving 51 liquor license renewals. Number eight, accepting workforce innovation and opportunity grants for employment and training services. Number nine, authorizing a redeployment agreement with the Met Council for existing grant agreements. Number 10, authorizing exclusive development rights at 12,000 Lake Street East to LUL Bros. Properties. Number 11, authorizing an agreement with the Met Council for the Water Efficiency Grant Pilot Program. Number 12, passage of a resolution acknowledging support for Hiawatha Lake Bridge Pier Project. Number 13, authorizing a Great Streets Loan to the Rise Up Center at 2828 Hennepin Avenue. Number 14, amending development terms in an Upper Harbor Agreement with the Port of Minneapolis. And lastly, approving an ordinance regulating sauna ordinances. I will move all items for approval.
Councilmember Chowdhury has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted just to... I just have some comments about item number 15. I will be supporting this, and I'm really pleased to see this ordinance come forward. As it was mentioned in the presentation in the biz committee, this started with a problem actually in my ward about two and a half years ago. We had a sauna business operating out of compliance due to a few different issues, but the most important piece was that they were running wood-fired saunas, multiple of them, 16 hours per day, seven days a week. So the air quality index around those saunas was measured by one of our air monitors, not right there, further away, to be 150, which is the red zone. It's considered unhealthy for everyone and that people will be experiencing health effects. As a comparison, on that particular day, the next highest reading in the city was about half that level. And that was in an industrial zone instead of being near affordable housing like this one was. So it's great to now have some guidance about how these sauna businesses can operate in a way that is safe and is beneficial for everyone, both those who use the saunas and also those who live near them. So thank you to staff for this work.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I wanted to pull item number three for a separate vote and to move two amendments, which are before you.
Okay. The amendments for item number three. Okay. We'll set aside item three and take up the rest of the items. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the agenda? Councilmember Chowdhury.
I can wait until we get to item number three.
Okay. Sounds good. Seeing no one else in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the biz agenda of minus item number three.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes.
That carries, and we will take up item number three. And I'll recognize Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. First, I just want to speak a little bit about why I authored this Tobacco Products Location Ordinance and brought this forward together with Councilmember Chowdhury and Councilmember Vitak. It came up after last year when we passed a minimum price for cigarettes that, you know, many parents in my ward were concerned that we weren't really addressing the issue of today, which is that youth are getting addicted to vapes. And if we want to prevent more tobacco abuse and addiction in our city, then we need to address vapes. Secondly, my ward has a couple of large downtown neighborhoods, Loring Park being one of them, where the tobacco distance regulations were exempted. And so Loring Park has been inundated with tobacco stores, and we don't have distance requirements from tobacco stores. So we decided to add that in, as well as to add a distance from schools to be in line with cannabis and liquor stores. So I'm really happy that we're moving this forward today. I also want to thank all the advocates who have been speaking out, both at the public hearing and here today. And then just to move the two amendments before you. The first one on section 281.120C is really technical... It's just very basic. I think it's just kind of a more active language rather than passive language. And then the second one, the minimum price shall not apply to individual components of electronic delivery devices that do not contain nicotine. So I think this relates to some of the businesses who sell like more reusable parts, not reusable parts, but modular parts for different... Different devices. And so the minimum price would not apply to those individual components of those devices. It would just apply to the pieces that are actually including nicotine. So I will move both of those amendments and ask if anyone has questions.
Councilmember Cashman has moved two separate amendments. I'm going to suggest we take both of those amendments up at the same time. Is there a second?
There's a second.
All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Chowdhury.
I just want to be added as a co-author.
Great. Seeing no one else left in queue, I am going to recommend that we call the roll on adopting this language as amended. Is that all right? The whole package? Yep.
Call the roll.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes.
That carries, and the full report is adopted. Oh, did you want to get... Did you want to make some comments?
Me as well.
Sorry about that. Let's... Councilmember Chowdhury.
Councilmember Vitak can go ahead. You... I'll go ahead then. Okay. I just want to make sure. I made most of my comments in the Business Housing and Zoning Committee, so I just wanted to take a second to thank all of the community members and advocates who have shown up today in our chambers to address the issue of nicotine addiction and specifically youth nicotine addiction through the usage of vapes. We know that the best way to stop tobacco use and nicotine addiction among young people is to stop the start. My personal experience is, as a zillennial, Gen Z, millennial cusper, we were set to be the generation to end smoking. And when Juul became available in all of its pretty flavors, hyper affordability, that changed within like a flip of a dime. It went from very few young people smoking and having a nicotine addiction to college campuses on game days, running out of Juul pods within hours, and leading into a lifelong issue of trying to quit smoking and vaping and going into a vicious cycle. And we know that the health effects, especially for young people, are tremendous, not only on our respiratory systems, but there is so much public health research that shows that vaping can lead to and exacerbate mental health issues from anxiety, depression, and suicidal ideation. We also know how predatory the tobacco industry is, and the way that it's set up is basically high potency of nicotine in vapes and almost like an arms race to see who could have the most high potency product, which is easier to be addicted to, and also the most flashy, colorful. I know our Attorney General has taken up many cases around companies that have specifically targeted youth using very like colorful candy flavors or even as harmful as making a vape look like a highlighter. So you can keep it in your backpack and use it in class, and your teacher or an educator and parent would never know. And so I think we're taking a step here on the Minneapolis City Council to make it less accessible for young people. And we know that one of the best tools that we have is pricing, and that's why we're moving forward on this today. And I'm hopeful to work with our Health Department and our CPED Department to kind of monitor and also understand what the impacts are as we make this change. And we also know, at the federal level, there has been very limited, if not any action, to address this crises that is ongoing. And so that's why, at the local level, Minneapolis is being a leader today.
Oh. Madam City Attorney.
Thanks, Council President, Councilmembers. Just to clarify the legislative record, to be clear, in 281.40, which is the language was before you, just wanting to make clear that for all cartridges, tanks, or refill containers, that it applies whether filled or unfilled. So just a point of clarification that it's, you know, component... Other component parts that would not apply, but for those, again, the cartridges, tanks, or refill containers, it would apply whether filled or unfilled.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Vitak.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Councilmembers Cashman and Chowdhury for their leadership on this. They've been the champions on this work, along with the advocates and the Health Department staff. You know, I did this work for 20 years before being on the council, so it's always a pleasure to see it continue. There's a lot of advocates here today that have worked on this for years and years and years. And, you know, the work was always around cigarettes, and then the tobacco industry, as they do, just kind of swooped in and made e-cigarettes and vape devices huge in the community for young people. And so this is part of the work that helps to keep our young people from smoking. So I'm proud of my colleagues for doing this work and also for the advocates for staying at it and keeping lungs loud. That's what their t-shirt... That's what their t-shirts say. And so thank you all so much for the continued work on this and protecting our children.
Thank you for that. And before we move on to our next committee report, I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Osman. Councilmember Osman, would you like your votes to be reflected?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Would you like to vote in the affirmative on our previous business?
Yes. All ayes, watching.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk? Sounds good. The next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward 10 items. Item one, approving the project and special assessments for the Fulton Residential Resurfacing Project. Item two, approving an ordinance amending provisions related to concerts at the Upper Harbor Community Performing Arts Center. Item three, approving a large block event permit for the Somali American Day Fest. Item four is concurring with the City Engineers' variance request for the reconstruction of the Cedar Lake Road Bridge over the BNSF Railroad. Item five is accepting a bridge investment program for the Nicolet Bridge over Minnehaha Creek Project. Item six is authorizing an agreement with the Park Board for the Nicolet Avenue Bridge over the Minnehaha Creek Rehabilitation Project. Item seven is authorizing year-end budget procedures for special service districts. Item eight is authorizing an MOU with Hennepin County to receive vegetation for our city biochar production. Item nine is authorizing a pipeline license agreement with KPKC... CPKC, excuse me, for permission to install a storm sewer pipeline beneath the railroad tracks. And item 10 is authorizing a pipeline license agreement with CPKC for a storm sewer pipeline crossing on 22nd Avenue North and 1st Street North in the right-of-way. And I'll move approval of all 10 items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, the bridge investment for the Nicolet Avenue Bridge. I want to thank our federal partners for almost $35 million for that project. I'm sure if Councilmember Kosky was here, she'd be doing the same and instead of me. On item number one, the Fulton Residential Project Approval and Assessment, I want to thank the Fulton residents who came to testify and submitted comments. I certainly hear their concerns, and I also know that this is really necessary work to stabilize the integrity of streets in this area. It's a benefit to all the individual properties in it, and a resurfacing is much more efficient than letting streets degrade further to the point of needing a full reconstruction. A big reason why this has gone on so long, since well before my time, is that this is one of our city's floodplains. And the solutions that we need to do to address the flood area underneath and within this neighborhood, those solutions have changed over time in working, whether with the watershed district or the park board, on what those solutions might be. Our Public Works staff has worked really hard and for quite a long time to figure out how to best accommodate our stormwater ordinance and not need an exemption from it. So that is perhaps the timing of this, but the actual road assessments, which are uniform across the whole city, and it doesn't matter if you have stormwater infrastructure by your home or not, it is all the same price. It is all the same cost to residents. I just did want to point out that I was at a meeting last night about this again, and our Public Works team is working so hard on this project. I value their support.
Thank you for those comments. Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Committee of the Whole, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. The Committee of the Whole is bringing forward two items. The first is a sound permit submitted by Dance Academy for the Eath Street Crossing Events on July 12th and August 1st. Lastly, a staff direction related to MDHR settlement agreement. I'll move approval of item number one and a deletion of item number two.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee report, including the deletion of item number two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward three items. Item number one is accepting a fourth judicial drug court grant award for liaison, research, and monitoring support. Item number two is amending the grant period for the Promising Practices Program for Culture Specific Family Home Visiting Services. And item number three is approving appointments to the Community Commission on Police Oversight. I'll move approval of these items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Chavez. Okay. Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Council President. I want to comment on Community Commission on Police Oversight Committee. I really want to thank June Palmer, also known Elizabeth... Sorry. Lizzie Palmer, for her commitment to serve Ward 6 residents. It's really exciting to have her on the committee, someone who had made a lot of, you know, work on police accountability and so on. on police accountability and so on. I think that she's a perfect fit for Ward 6. And when the approval is done, I'm hoping that we, I and her, could work together in the community engagement, and I think she'll be a perfect fit for Ward 6's seat. So I really want to thank her for her patience on the process of onboarding and her commitment to serve for six residents. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to also thank Leah Enderly for stepping up to take on the Ward 12 seat. The seat has been vacant since last year, and it was really a really strong effort to try to get community members to apply for this position. She's going to bring a wealth of knowledge and experience, and I'm just really grateful that Leah is taking on public service and filling this important role.
And I added myself to queue to also thank my appointment, Mike McMill, I can't say his last name, Mickelney, for his commitment to serve. He's also a military veteran, and I'm just really excited about his deeper commitment to serve the community in this different way. I also wanted to thank Josh Lor, my original appointment to the CCPO at the beginning of the journey of reforming our civilian oversight. He had contributed tremendously, including helping me with my amendments and bringing up a perspective that I thought was extremely thoughtful to this process. So I'm looking forward to getting the CCPO back into a place where it's really effective. And seeing no one else left in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries. The report is adopted, and that completes the reports of our standing committees. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have one notice today. Councilmember Cashman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code to update regulations related to on-premises and off-premises signs. Are there any questions on this notice? Seeing none, that notice is hereby given, and no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. We have four items today. First, Councilmember Osman moves to amend the prior introduction of the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code, given at the regular meeting of the City Council on February 27th by adding Chapter 530 and 555, returning to author chapters 525 and 565, and increasing the number of built form overlay districts in the zoning code and the zoning map, and to refer the matter to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee. Second, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Palmasano moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Administration Code for first reading and referral to the Public Health and Safety Committee, aligning city and state law in regard to sick and safe time, and updating its enforcement provision. Item three and four are from Councilmembers Chavez, Chuck Tai, and Chowdhury, who move to introduce the subject matter of two ordinances amending the administrative, Administration and Civil Rights Codes, adding reporting requirements and protections for discrimination based on perceived citizenship or immigration status. These ordinances are also slated for referral to the Public Health and Safety Committee. May I have a motion to approve these introductions?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on these introductions? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say a couple of quick words about the ordinance introduction on safe and sick time. You know, you might remember, our ordinance was enacted in 2016. Ah, sorry, the microphone. I was one of the original authors, and now I'm the last author standing here on the City Council. So that is my intent in bringing this forward and continuing to improve it. Originally, this was just simply about aligning our sick and safe time ordinance with state law. Our sick and safe time work promoted efforts at the state, which came to pass, and frankly, there are some improvements, I think, to state law that over those few years that this has been in operation that we would like to also adopt. So I'm working with staff to incorporate as much as possible of the recommendations of the Workplace Advisory Committee. I'm happy to work with all of you on that. I look forward to bringing this forward with support of labor and workers, and I'm happy to discuss that. I've only had a chance to very briefly start some of those discussions, but I do plan to reach out. Language has been being worked on. It is not final yet. As soon as I have draft language, I'll be sharing that, and it will be available online. You know, one idea about, well, let's make this more similar to state law, because there are provisions in state law that make things, you know, you are eligible to take safe and sick time because of more people in your life, more family-type members. And one of my ideas was, well, if we want to just go with state laws, if that's truly better than the cities right now, why wouldn't we just rescind this? Let the state take care of it. But the reason why we shouldn't, the reason why we should do this ourselves, is because we have a really strong enforcement arm that we've built. This gives us the ability to enforce this law at our city. We want to reduce confusion in the workplace, not have employers needing to post state law regulations that are different than city, but we want to be able to continue to work with employers, to particularly educate employers and employees on what this means. And we have a pretty good handle on enforcement. We've been doing it longer than anybody else in our state. So I'm eager to work on this project with anyone who'd like to join me. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else left in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and these matters are referred to the appropriate committees. The next order of business is unfinished business. We have two unfinished business items today. First, we have an amendment to the 2025 License Fee Schedule related to license fee establishments. This item came from our Business Housing and Zoning Committee at our last meeting, but was postponed to align with the accompanying sauna licensing ordinance. As that ordinance was approved by this body earlier in the agenda, I'll see if Councilmember Osman, the chair of the Biz Committee and primary author of the ordinance, would like to move approval of this amendment.
Yes, I'm happy to move approval. Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the motion is adopted. Next, we have consideration of an amendment to Council Action 2024-A-0845, a staff direction adopted by the City Council last November related to municipal revenue. This item was on our last agenda but was postponed to today's meeting to give Councilmember Wonsley, the author of the original direction, time to consider the proposed amendments. We've been able to discuss it. My amendment aimed to expand the scope, but in consultation with Councilmember Wonsley, she wanted to continue with the specificity of the previous language, so we removed those strike-throughs, but are still keeping the expansion of the scope to look at alternative revenue sources. And the other piece was working with our professional staff to firm up an actual date. So we have no later than August 18th is our date on this. Is there any questions or discussion? Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Just to add maybe a little note that I know you're aware of, but for the body, this also includes our policy research team in the Legislative Department conducting work and research to support the Board of Estment and Taxation. And so one of the reasons for bringing this forward is because now that we have this new resource in our department, the Board of Estment and Taxation wanted to partner with council to explore some of these items about additional revenue streams that could be available to local cities. And since it's our first time working with a separate elected body, I felt it was important and talked to the president about making sure that this body took official action, so that we were upfront and transparent that this work is not just informing the work of this body, this elected body, but also our sister body, the Board of Estment and Taxation, which is a separate elected body, which has very specific charter prescribed duties related to tax authority and debt for the city of Minneapolis. So I just wanted to put that on the record about this being our first attempt to work with a sister elected body through our policy and research team.
No, thank you for that additional context, and I'll also add, the president of BET, President Brandt, had two priorities this term. One was expanding revenue options for the city of Minneapolis, and he got myself and the mayor both to be in shared commitment that we absolutely want to explore that, and Vice President Chuck Tai, and getting the Board of Estment and Taxation staffed with full time. And so this action today is aiming to deliver on both of those priorities of the BET, and making sure that we can identify those alternative sources of revenue and have that professional staff working on that. Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I'd like to pull items five and six on this for a separate vote.
These aren't sub-items, that's the language of the motion. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, I think the better approach would be if sub-items five and six, or items five and six upon the motion in front of you, are not supported, then the better approach would be to move to strike them rather than move to separate them. They're presented as a package, so to address the package would be to move amend to strike items five and six, and then take up that amendment and move from that point.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I move to strike items five and six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I do think it's important for the public record to state what is being proposed to be strike, which is actually pretty straightforward, and I think really concerning that we're talking about striking it, considering we just had the big horrible bill be passed nationally that literally was a handout to some of the most affluent households in interest of our country at the expense of defunding other public programs like SNAP and so many others. So I want to read the language. Five is in requesting policy changes that will be required at the state and local level to implement a tax on the wealthiest individuals in Minneapolis through consultation with the city attorney, excluding property taxes, identify any potential revenue sources that are currently available to cities under state law. Mind you, this is also efforts that were explored by our current state legislator, where they're also looking at similar things. So we literally looked at leaders at our state legislator and say, oh, that's great, they're looking at revenue streams that also takes into consideration our most affluent properties, households, individuals, et cetera, to really look at how we can continue sustaining and funding our most critical public programs. Number six is policy changes that will be required at the state and local level to implement a tax on the wealthiest businesses in Minneapolis. Again, something that's also being explored and have been explored at the state, as they're also having conversations around bringing revenue. So I at least wanted to share context, or at least share what's included that's being proposed to be eliminated by Councilmember Rainville, and also to encourage my colleagues to simply not support this motion. It makes no sense to not want to receive information on how we can bring in revenue and make sure that all parties, stakeholders in our city, are paying their fair share. So I would encourage my colleagues to not support this motion.
Vice President Chuck Tai. Oh, Councilmember Rainville. I think that was from a carryover. Vice President Chuck Tai.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to get in queue for this discussion to speak strongly against this amendment to strike items five and six, which is exploring policies that allow us, as Councilmember Wonsley outlined, implementing a tax on the wealthiest individuals and the wealthiest businesses in Minneapolis. You know, I think it is, I think I'm surprised to see this amendment come forward. It always strikes me when we're having conversations around property tax levy burden, in particular on working-class homeowners, first-generation homeowners in our city, homeowners in North Minneapolis in our city. You know, a property tax was, it came to exist as a form of a wealth tax, but we know today that's not the reality. And property taxes do inherently exist as a form of regressive taxation, where the burden felt by someone making $50,000 a year is far greater than the burden felt by someone making $500,000 a year. A progressive tax system in which we implement a tax on those who can afford it to pay their fair share, meaning the same amount of, so that the cost that's being absorbed by taxpayers is greater on those who can afford it. I think that is in line with Minneapolis values. Taxing the rich, I don't think, is a controversial opinion in Minneapolis, is one that's generally speaking, pretty widely supported in our city. And so I'm going to be voting against this amendment, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you to Councilmember Wonsley and President Payne for bringing this forward. I think this is very forward-thinking research to be requesting in this moment. I would also like to speak strongly against striking item number five and six that looks at how we can implement the tax on the wealthiest individuals in the city of Minneapolis. And I think it's important to center it in the context of the benefit that was given to the wealthiest in our country through the big disastrous bill that was passed through the House and Senate. Through that bill, the wealthiest individuals, the top 1%, will be getting $121 billion net tax cuts. And according to analysis from the U.S. Treasury Department, nearly 60% of the tax cuts, or about $2.5 trillion, are going to go to the top 10% of taxpayers who earn more than $228,000 annually. We need wealth distribution in our country, and our federal government is simply not going to provide for that. We know that poverty is an issue in the city of Minneapolis, and it's time that we, as a council and a city, start speaking with that with deep, deep clarity and understand that speaking about poverty and addressing it and wealth distribution, when we have just concentrated it more and more over the last decades, is not political. It's a moral question, and it is very material. We have a tale of two cities in the city of Minneapolis. People are struggling every single day to feed their families, afford their health care bills, and we know it's going to get worse. And if we don't find ways to relieve tax burden on the individuals who have lower incomes and are already struggling, we are also going to see significant public safety issues. Crimes of opportunity only go up as poverty increases. And so safety, health, and having resources are things that are all connected, and we just do not have the tools before us in order to do it. And we have a lot of work to do, which includes starting, getting this research, and then working with our state legislature and earning support in order to make this a reality. And I would advise my colleagues to keep an open mind, take a step back, and really try to understand what the issue is here, and not just take it as a face value, and think about what the potential benefits are, and be forward-looking in terms of what we need. Because local government just simply has to step up. We know that for sure for the next four years, and there are going to be ongoing impacts on our economy and on our people, particularly people of color and indigenous folks in the city of Minneapolis, long after the Trump administration is done.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. Just for the clerks to help us with this situation, because I don't want the public to get confused. Council President Payne is bringing forward an amendment to something that was unfinished business. Councilmember Rainville is amending that amendment. We're voting on Councilmember's amendment first. I just don't want people to get confused that Council President Payne is the one striking language, and I support the underlying motion, because I believe that we do need to tax the rich. We do need to tax the wealthiest people in the city of Minneapolis if we're ever going to help address poverty in our community, period.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. This is a question for either you or Councilmember Wonsley. It's really about in items five and six, what you mean by wealthiest individuals or wealthiest businesses. Is there any information from state legislators or from the BET about what qualifies as wealthiest? And my question here is really about, like, I think a lot of times people think that they are going to be impacted by something when they're actually not, if it's for the 1%. If it's for the 1%, it's not going to impact 99% of us. And so for us to understand that, like, we are not going to be impacted by this, this would be something that does impact, you know, the folks who own large swaths of land, people who own the largest businesses in our state. We do have billionaires in Minnesota, so I am wondering if you have any more detail about that at this time.
Did you want to speak to?
Yeah. I just want to first take a step back. There's no impact. This is a request for information and research. So this is not an ordinance. So that is why we kept the language very high level in terms of it can include businesses, it can include households. And that's why I also asked for information around how the state has perceived or responded to this dynamic of what does wealth mean on a policy level. So we kept it high level as we do with all research requests so that we can get the broadest range of information. And then that might inform next steps that we can take that might have more of the concrete impact that I think you're getting at. But I at least wanted to start from the place of it's high level, there's currently no impacts, it's pretty broad.
I would add, you know, I could have actually added a little bit more clarity by taking the second sentence of bullet point number five and just making that a separate bullet point. My original amendment was to just be inclusive of all forms of revenue, including a wealth tax. But we didn't want to lose sight of that. That's why we held it for a cycle to make sure that we were keeping, and again, keeping the language that had already passed in this body and was already due for a report back this month, actually, originally. And it was just wanting to make sure that we were including the Board of Estment and Taxation and being very explicit about the role of that staffer is why we wanted to make this amendment. And as we were making this amendment, it was also informed by our policy and research staff that this, they have a very good relationship with an organization that they wanted to contract this out with. So they just wanted to make sure that there was language that didn't restrict the scope of it. So this was expanding that scope and, which was inclusive of the original language, but we just wanted to make sure we didn't strike through that original language so that as that outside firm is looking at this, they're not losing sight of the original intent here.
Okay, well, I'm curious to see like what those levels get defined as because I think that people really do misunderstand the difference between a million and a billion dollars. This isn't like a magnitude of 10. You know, this is exorbitant. And when there are people who have hundreds of millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars, that can be considered greedy or hoarding wealth when in our city we have so many people who are living paycheck to paycheck. In Loring Park where I live, the minimum income is like $33,000 annually. And that's not acceptable. That's not affordable. It's not sustainable. And people shouldn't be having to, you know, pay so many sales taxes and property taxes and all these other kinds of fees in our city if there are people with hundreds of millions of dollars in their pockets who could contribute a little bit more. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring up. Again, this is research and I look forward to seeing it. I think in the context of the disastrous bill that just passed, it's really important for cities, states, and others to step up to meet our constituents' needs.
Councilmember Vitam.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask my colleague, Councilmember Rainville, to consider removing the action. I think having the research done is a good idea and just we'll get this information presented to us, Councilmember Rainville, and decisions will be made after that. I think it's totally fine for us to get the information that Councilmember Wonsley is asking for and to have it presented to the council and decisions will be made further.
Councilmember Rainville.
I agree with you, Councilmember Vitam. I do rescind my motion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rainville has rescinded his amendment to delete items five and six. So we are now on the original motion amendment that I brought forward. Councilmember Wonsley. No. All right. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitam.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and that motion is adopted. Our next order of business is announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? Seeing none, with that, we've completed our business today with nothing further to come before the council and without objection, this meeting is hereby adjourned.
Michael just said, isn't it ironic? This is when the meeting actually physically starts usually.